Fifty-nine.
Six fifty-nine. He's time.
You know, if you change your battery, it probably won't.
It's about all I need tonight. Call order, the City of Columbia and the City Council meeting of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. We'll have the invocation by Deanne Davis, and then we'll join together with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Lord, bless those who hold office in the government of our city, help them to do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. And to use their authority to serve our citizens faithfully, in your name, pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good soul, for the beginning and justice for all. Deanne, may you call the roll?
Becker?
Here.
Souter? McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Attilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
You received in your pack a copy of the January third, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. I have no reading of communication tonight, so I'll move to the reports of commissions and boards. And first, you receive the Planning Commission, Planning Commission meeting minutes of January tenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on those minutes? You also received a copy of the Board of Zoning Appeal Meeting Minutes of January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any comments on those minutes? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. Next, we have recognition of persons desiring to appeal, appear. First, we have Danny Edgerton from the Columbiana Chamber of Commerce to discuss upcoming events in the City of Columbiana. Come forward.
Hello?
Hello.
Hearing us, I'm looking for closure of the street in Adora for Chalk on Main, which would be June twenty-third through twenty-fifth. And then closure of the streets in Adora for Christmas in July, which would be July twenty-first to twenty-third. So the chalk on Main will be sort of a block party on Friday night, and the chalk artists will work on Saturdays. And I know on, I think I might have put through the twenty-third, but the Raitons are there on the twenty-third, so that obviously would take questions.
So it'll be familiar to, it'll be typical of the other chalk.
The chalk will be basically the same, except we're not going to start the artists on Friday night. We're going to start on Saturday, so they have two mornings to work in, and two evenings working, so that they can, you know, have a chance to do whatever's as hard as it was.
Okay.
And then the Christmas event. There's a possibility we wouldn't close the street because we're not totally, we haven't totally got that all arranged, but what we're doing is, we'll go into the park. And we're going to have some Christmas events there, and then Christmas downtown and decorating for downtown. We may put some vendors out on the street.
So that's July twenty-first through the July twenty-third.
Exactly, July twenty-first and twenty-second, because the Raitons are there on the twenty-third, my apologies.
What were the dates on the twenty-fifth, Danny?
The twenty-third, June?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
And that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and that would not be, I don't need the closure until three on the Thursday.
Three P M. For the Chalk Fest?
Because we're running just a block just to work on that first night, we gotta, we gotta lay out the street. And, you know, do the black, do the black paint and that sort of thing. And I'm hoping to get the community involved in that, because, you know, it was done by about eight people, it took a long time, so I thought, well, we'll offer a pizza.
There you go.
And just make it, you know, that be part of the food too, so that they will hopefully go, you know, this is our job.
Yeah, I like that.
But aren't the artists gonna be in the street in the mornings?
They will be. I expect some artists may want to start on Saturday night, it depends, I mean, on Friday night, but that doesn't go now. We've poured them those off, so if they want to start, they can start, like, I guarantee you, a big truck driver's here at the five o'clock too.
Okay.
So you try, we'll come on Friday, start, which will be interesting too. But those professional artists, they block out their spaces themselves and then paint. But for all the amateurs, we paint, because that's just something they don't realize, that if they have painted down, they can chop down.
Yeah.
Are we okay with our safety forces, chief?
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay.
Main street down.
We're trying for Chalk on Main, we'll have, we'll have some vendors there, but for Christmas in July, we're going to have vendors in the food vendors.
So the road would be closed on, for the Chalk Fest, the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, starting at three P M on Friday?
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought she was saying on Saturday that it wasn't until three, and I'm like, how are people gonna be out in the street? Okay, okay.
On Sunday, which I think we might have to talk about this, the workers felt like that was gonna be a.
Yeah, we can always adjust that, huh? Yeah.
Asking for, you know, what I probably could use in adjusting.
I think it's great that she kind of pivoted, because last year, if you remember, on Sunday, we didn't have it staffed. There was nobody down there, we just had it road closed, and we hadn't as many people or more on, on Sunday.
And I hadn't planned on leaving the street closed, even though we'd had the permission to do it, but when these guys came over on Saturday, they said, do you want us to take it down? It seems wrong.
Yeah.
Tonight, I said, we'll just leave it up, and he said, we have permission, but it was amazing.
Yeah.
It was full of people, just wandering the streets, and all these vendors, all of it.
That's great.
Pictures with everything?
I have to take this opportunity to say that Lance spoke, Lance made a presentation to the R cap group.
Yeah.
It wasn't the, it was the group, in Portman.
Yeah.
And Lance did a presentation down there, and he did a PowerPoint presentation, the room was packed, and a lot of communities were there. And I tagged along with him. And after the presentation, I had like five people come up to me and go like, what is this, you know, this chalk fest? We had more questions about, that's so fantastic, so we all here get used to having these kind of great events, and it's a lot of work, right? And it's a lot of work, but it's, it's a great thing, and, and it's something that's really good about our community, so we appreciate the chambers' work on these projects, so. Motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Thank you, Danny, thanks for your work.
And Danny also has the, well, of course, we haven't voted yet, but I'll cover that in the manager's report.
Deanne, may you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes. Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Next, we have Tom Ekel from the Tourism Board to discuss the Wine Fest event. Tom?
Thank you. Lance, I was just curious, are you gonna still compete in the Ecker Chalk?
You're right, yeah, yeah.
That's such a great job.
Thanks.
As a professional, you'd have to join the union.
I'm, I'm Tom Ekel, and I'm here in the Capitol, Columbiana Tourism Bureau, tonight, and I'm currently in the board, sort of the treasurer of the group. I'm here to announce that the two thousand twenty-three Columbiana Wine Fest will be held again at our, our, June third, beginning of fourth again. We had a lot of fun there last year, we had fifteen hundred people, it was really overwhelming, so we're trying to prepare for it, we'll look at it perhaps this year. And also wanted to say that we just concluded another successful Joy Christmas event. We're still in the process of tearing down and putting things away, starting to get ready for next year, and I think we have a first meeting for next year in February, and so it takes a huge effort to do the whole display. But we, we had, I think, a little bit less attendance this year, more pre-COVID numbers than we had this year. It seemed like during COVID, the numbers went up, I think, because people had nothing else to do. Kind of interesting, but it was successful, we, and I, I didn't want to make sure that the public knows that we, you know, we, as for tourism, the profits for that, we, first, we, first, we have to support our Joy Christmas. We had completed replacing all the L E D lights and all the displays, we bought a lot of used displays, a lot of the money that, you know, our profits have gone towards restoring the displays, requiring the displays. Every year, we buy new displays, so we, some of our money we have to put back in to make sure it's, you know, it's, it's a good event. We also installed Wi-Fi in some, some of the pavilions this year, and we, in a short time, when we get all the bills in, we will be making a major donation for the park, unless we're doing ten thousand dollars for the profits. We kind of share the profits with the park. And I, and also, I wanted to just, let me, I'd like to say that a little bit about tourism, we remind everybody of the importance of Columbiana tourism. Our mission is to promote everything Columbiana. We do that several ways, we have an office on North Main Street and our, excuse me, in the theater building. We're, we're there from ten to four-thirty Monday through Friday, and we're open Saturday in the summertime, and we, we, we're there to welcome people to Columbiana. We are increasing our activity on social media, we're, we're, are gonna really try to do a better job of promoting everything Columbiana, every event, everything, but one, these events that we just announced from, from the chamber. We'll, we'll do everything we can to help promote our events for our social media presence. And also, we're, we are working on another little project that we, we think would be helpful to Columbiana, we are investigating, that's all I can say is investigate. We don't have a plan, we're just working to, on the signage and the, of the entrances all around the town, to see, let's see what can be done. I was hoping that three young men from student, council's gonna be there and talk a little bit about what they're hoping, so, all that project, so we think that's something that would really be helpful, that when people actually enter the town, to have, have a little bit of a welcome sign. Can I answer any questions?
Just you're doing a great job, Tom, you and the guys, and some girls up at the, at the Chamber Building.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's a lot of fun.
Why don't you tell them about how many cars went through? One of sixty-five hundred or fall apart like that?
Yeah.
Six thousand five hundred cars.
I believe we're like maybe ninety-five hundred during COVID, something like that.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
It's pretty amazing, man, it's, it's a lot of hard work, you know, a lot of, we, we need more help, we need more volunteers, if anybody, you know, has another heart to help any of those kind of events, we could use a lot of help for, you know, for what we're doing.
Are, are there still opportunities for sponsorship of light displays? Would someone contact tourism for that, or?
Sponsor in what?
Some of the light displays have sponsors, you know, that if someone provides for, i- is it still open to have opportunities like that, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's one reason we have some people in the office, do anything, if you want to go win a bunch of Wine Fest tickets, where you can buy Joy Christmas passes, you can go into our office. All right.
I, I just, I'd like to say one thing, just kind of Columbiana in general. Just make sure everybody understands that the school makes some fantastic T-shirts and, and sweatshirts, and they've got about forty different designs. And they are not expensive. If there was some way that we could get, I don't know, tourism or Chamber or something, talking over there and figure out a way that you guys could buy some T-shirt or sweatshirts or whatever, them, bring them over and sell them.
We, we would be interested in that, we do have some, some items, some people in Columbiana, so they got them to be out for sale in the office.
Yeah.
Future bags, and they pack some things, anything about Columbiana, so.
Well, these are, all these designs the kids did themselves, they've got a lot of T-shirts and sweatshirts and stuff over there. I've got two or three of them, just walk in over there and say, I want this size, and this is what I want, oh, no problem, we've got it. And twenty seconds later, you're walking out, that, that's all it takes. They do a good job, they do a great. Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Maybe I should, or maybe I shouldn't say this, but Tom is treasurer of the Tourism Bureau, and I just want to say that he is doing, he really did a fant, he's done a fantastic job, but coming in and assisting with us getting our money organized, knowing where the money is and where it's going. We have very detailed reports, even lets his own accounting people come from his company to help get the bookkeeping set up, and I think that's really, really crucial. To have a good organization, we're so blessed to have the Jurism Bureau, and appreciate, appreciation goes to Tom to give us that kind of support, and I think it's great. And if anybody, and now that we have the, the Chamber people here as well, all of you should go up and see the offices now. They've restructured the office space up there, and we have both the Chamber and the Tourism Bureau there, and they've really relayed out the space. And that's so when people come into town, they can go in there and learn about what they can find out about the city, so, and all the different things we have going on, so. It's a, I think it's a great partnership with the Chamber, and I think it's two good organizations, you know, for the good of Columbiana, and we're very blessed to have them both, so. Since you're both here tonight, I hope you accept our great appreciation for what you folks are doing, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, all that.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Anything else on those good things? So I don't know which one of you is gonna take up art, Dan, or you gonna do something for the Chalk Fest this year?
I draw flies once in a while, but that's.
Yeah. Yeah, we should, we should have.
I think we'll collaborate by, by staying around Lance. That's great.
The under construction sign.
Yeah, all right.
Very good, thank you very much. Next, we have the City Manager's Report.
Yeah, I think we about, well, covered it. The, I did attend the hub meeting, which is the, the Chamber and the Tourism and the City getting together and making sure we're all on the same page, which is key. The one example that we used was the community calendar. You know, we worked on that a couple of years ago, got it all done, and then just kind of faded away, but I'm happy to report that Danny, you've got the login credentials there. So they're gonna, the Downtown Merchants and the Chamber will all be putting their, using the calendar. And we have other administrators out at the Dutch Village and then also Town Center too, so. Hopefully, twenty twenty-three, that calendar is completely filled up, because it's always busy in Columbiana, and it's a, it's a good thing, and, yeah, I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to this year. The, I did attend the Chamber meeting, it was a really good meeting, and a lot of exciting things come out of it, and, and that among, along with the hub meeting, I think that, that's key. And, you know, I, I do think it's great that we have a welcome center in town now, you know, because before it was, you know, a couple of blocks north, it wasn't, it was kind of disconnected, so here, you know, they can have that, and actually, Bridget and I, we did, we did talk about the T-shirts, and so I think they have a, a great vision, and I, I think we'll just continue with the momentum that we've been creating. So that was, that was good to be part of. Let's see. Been spending a lot of time on grants, we finally got the FEMA grants finished, ODOT grant was finished, that's the one for the park. We hit send on that this, this week. So that, those three grants, probably about four million dollars worth, is what we were working on, so we'll see what happens. But it's, it's been a busy year for grants. Board of Zoning Appeals met, they just had the, they didn't have anything on the agenda, just an organization meeting, and lasted about five minutes, but it was nice to see everybody. And, you know, so when they do have to get back together, they're in practice, so that was last Thursday, and I think they met one time during the summer. So that, they don't meet that often, but it's, it's nice, you know, we, we appreciate everybody working together, and, and Board of Zoning Appeals is definitely an important part of our, our community. The youth entrepreneur class, they, they're in contact with Town Center and Associates, and they are gonna go to Carnegie to present their project in either February or March. They're talking right now, gonna take a bus over there, so that'll, it'll be, it's gonna be awesome. Well, let's see, a little bit more serious topic, we teamed up with a drug task force in Ready to Home since last meeting, and that made front page of the newspaper, and we will probably be some arrests that'll, will follow on that. Sticking along with Safety Forces, you're gonna, you're gonna hear tomorrow that, I believe it's tomorrow, Leetonia is going to be voting to ask us to do their dispatching. You know, we've talked about this in the last couple of years, and we're getting to the point where we're very close, so close that, you know, it's taken a couple of years to do this, but we're not a hundred percent sure, but as of today, we're thinking we may have to have an emergency reading on this agreement on the seventh of February. And we're gonna start the next day, potentially, so. That's, you know, that's how some things work, so it's going fast, I have been in contact with Mark Hudson about it, and of course, Chief's been working, he was actually over there today. We, we have to come up with a plan to cut everything over, which is mind blowing, I don't even know where you start, but I think that, I think they, I, I do think they have a good plan, and, and as I said, that, that, that's gonna be third reading for Leetonia tomorrow night, so you'll see that in the paper on, well, in the future, yes, coming, coming up, that, that they're, they're considering that tomorrow night. Tonight, we have a resolution on, for ODOT resurfacing, we you know, we did a lot of paving on Route fourteen, and then we left like the most easternly part, most westerly part of the city, and that's a different project, apparently. And we're gonna come back, and we're gonna do that this year. So it'll be like from maybe, maybe Arby's clear out towards the west, and then maybe Homestead or Creek Road up and over the hill or something. So that's, that's that project, so you'd already passed the resolution once on this, but this is the final resolution that they require to move forward, so. Oh, let's see, moving on, Park Board, they've been talking with the Baseball Association about a lease on the Mets Road Balls Field, you've seen that in your packets. Mark's reviewing that, and we're working together, it took a few months to do with the football stadium, probably take the same amount here, but basically, the youth baseball, they, they take, they take total care of that park out there. And I think they're going to invest some more money and maybe do some more things, and they just want to make sure that they have, you know, use of that in the future. R cap or Great Lakes Community GL cap, they secured a micro grant for downtown revitalization speaker to come into one-day seminar. And we've teamed up with actually the Chamber, and Bridget and Danny are gonna attend, and that, that should be very interesting, and, and hopefully you come up, come back with lots of low-hanging fruit, and we can change, change, change downtown even, even more for the better, so. We do appreciate you taking the time to do that, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long day, so. Put down twelve tons of patch, we do have that reporter tool on the website, if you have a particular pothole that you missed or we've missed, you can report that, we'll get out there. Did pick up the Christmas trees, I don't have the total numbers yet, actually, I saw a few being picked up today. We did get an order of four hundred tons of salt in. Remember that first? Oh, let's see, that first big storm, we did two hundred tons is what that took to do that one storm, it's somewhere at thirty-degree drop in, what, three hours or something? So we had to really lay down the salt on that one. Water department, they experienced a sledge line issue, which we talked about last time, but we've got it taken care of now. Everyone out there went under lab certification, so that's done, I think that's a three-year basis. And the line permitting process is complete, and we'll be hauling as well as permits. Waste water, had to service Mets Road Generator Block Heater. And we've been helping various departments with the hydroexhibition of things. Park and Cemetery. See, winter rentals of, of pavilions have resumed, and about ninety-five percent of Joy Christmas that we put up is down, so that's good. Electric Department, they did replace battery in number four truck, we did set a new pole on the Heck Road, there was a car accident out there that took a, took a pole out. And then we're lining up another voltage conversion project this, this spring, so. That's what's going on. Thanks, Barrett.
Thank you. Any questions for Lance? If not, we'll move to the Building Zoning Department report, December twenty twenty-two. Receive that report in your packet, is there any questions or comments on that report? Hearing none, we'll accept that report and move to the Columbiana EMS Department report of December twenty twenty-two. Questions on that report? Hearing none, we'll move to our review and comment regarding the bill list of January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on the bill list? Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to read all resolutions by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Deanne, may you call the roll?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
First, we'll move to Old Business, Resolution Number twenty-three dash R dash six-one-five, second reading. Resolution, accepting monies from the Columbiana County Board of Commissioners to be used exclusively for wages and related benefits to permit the City of Columbiana Police Department to assign an officer to the Columbiana County Drug Task Force.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments regarding that motion? Do you want me to call the roll?
Listen.
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Moved to new business. Resolution number twenty-three dash R dash six-one-six, first reading. The final resolution enacted by the City of Columbia here and after referred to as the local public agency, L P A, in the matter of resurfacing of a portion of State Route fourteen within the city limits. E I D one zero seven five four five in the city of Columbia.
So moved, second.
Motion second. Any comments? Do you want me to call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion to enter into M O U's between the City of Columbia and Ask Me Union and the O P B A Union regarding health insurance contribution rates for twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, questions?
Actually, I did have a quick question on this. Lance, I think you had said that we're going to be covering this in the budget. When does that actually hit the employees' paychecks, though?
This is going to be effective immediately.
Okay.
Is it, does it, does it go back to the first paycheck of the year? Or?
Well, it doesn't. Yeah, we did not make any changes going into the year.
Any other instructions on the motion? Do you want me to call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Before I read this next motion, I'd like to ask, we have two current city council members on the volunteer fire dependence. Can I ask who they are? I thought it was you and Ted. Yeah, okay. So the question before you folks is, do you want to fire them and hire new people to be on this?
No, we, no, we really don't.
Well, Ted's not here to say.
It's just your way of getting back, right?
Okay, so we will name them in this motion. So I'm assuming I'm going to read this motion to appoint Dan Becker and Ted Souter to the Volunteer Firefighters Dependence on board.
So moved.
Second.
Well, to get a second, Dan.
I was going to have you over here. I know, I'm I'm starting to count heads because of the amount of people present.
Any questions on the motion? Do you want me to call the roll?
Abstain. Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Okay, we've concluded all the items to be acted upon. I believe next we have an opportunity for anyone out there wishes to make a comment. This is your time to speak, Tom.
I have to mention one thing that I thought somebody might be interested in. Next Tuesday night on the network, Magnolia, Magnolia Network, our barn is going to be featured on the show, Restoration Road. Not sure what time it starts either eight or nine o'clock. It's an hour show. It's been streaming. This is the first night it's going to be on Red Door. So Magnolia Network.
Next Tuesday, you say, Tom?
Yeah, next Tuesday night. My understanding is it's to be the fourth episode of the season. I'm not actually proven that that's what we pulled. The next Tuesday is the fourth episode.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I did.
Thanks for.
So you you haven't streamed it or you have?
I've seen it.
Okay.
It's streaming on, you know, one of those.
Yeah, Magnolia Network, it was on there. So I, Dan just asked me how to do it, and I said, I don't know. I had my daughter do it, so. But I got to see it the first night on it, on the, it was on the eighteenth of November, so.
Do you think your daughter'd mind coming to my house?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
It was, it's a really great thing that really highlights the city as well as the beautiful barn rehabilitation renovation. And it's absolutely fabulous. So kudos to Tom and all of them involved. And Tom has a cameo in the series as well, so.
Maybe we ought to have a watch party somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we don't have to figure out how to do it.
Do we know anyone who could host a watch party of any kind?
I don't know. I think Bridget just volunteered us.
Yes, for the theater. That would be fun.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fun to see. Can't do that for theater? That's what I was thinking. That'd be kind of cool if we did it at the theater. That'd be fun.
Well, you don't need it. You, all you need is a fire stick, apparently.
So so moved.
We should talk about that. We have key players here that can put that together. That'd be a fun thing to publicize. We could do that at the theater. I think it'd be great to do that. Are, okay, any other comments out there? Anyone who wants to make? How about up here, Council? Council comments?
I want to thank you ladies for standing up and taking charge this year. Appreciate that very much. And, yeah, I saw Danny work the last Chalk Fest, and I just, just don't get in our way. But I seriously, I want to thank you for shouldering that burden for us. And I'm, I'm certain you'll do a wonderful job.
Any other comments up here? I I have to just say this. And Tom talked about the volunteerism at the Joy Christmas. It really, we really need volunteers. It's great. The high school kids really helped out. They continue to help out like with the booths and we work with them. And if you want to feel good, and I mean this sincerely, just take the tickets one night. Because of how people talk about Columbia. You know, they they love it. They love what we do. And I have to relate this story because it's what touched me. We, my wife and I worked with a lady up one night collecting money, and she was so bubbly. And when she tell the people, they pull, oh, and you're going to love the show. And she was all going, John. And so when it slowed down a little bit, we started talking. And she says, oh, yeah, my husband, I volunteered like six or seven times. We come all the time we can to volunteer. And I said, you just seemed really enjoying. And she says, well, I'll tell you what. She said, I had breast cancer during, right when COVID hit. And she said, I spent two and a half years and I never got to talk to anybody because I was home and I was trying to recover from a very difficult surgery. And and so I never saw anybody. So for me to come out here and to spend time with happy people and get to share something so special. And I mean to tell you, I I'm trying to cry. It was just so touching to hear that. And, you know, so I thought it was a great story and it's really a fun thing to do. And it's a tremendous event that we have, and it takes a lot of work. And so I hope we have it next year. And I think it'll be a great thing to do, so I did want to relate that. Any other comments? Okay, this harsh thing I have to all night. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.